All right. Everyone's in?
Yep.
All right. Good evening, folks. You're at the Board of Selectmen's meeting for June 14th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. In pursuant of the Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020, under suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GLC 38-18 and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the select will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and our parties with the right and or requirement to attend. This meeting can be found at the Office of the AG on their webpage. Town will persevere to use conference call capabilities regularly for other parties to listen in and participate accordingly. If not possible, we'll post on the town's website an audio recording as soon as possible after the meeting. And attendance tonight is Joe Diddy, Select Chair, Vice Chairman Russell Fox, the Clerk Mr. Mowbray, Chief Administrative Officer Carl J. Steinhardt, Administrative Assistant Acting is Robin Sow. We're going to start off with the Fledge of Allegiance. Mr. Fox, can you start us off in the Fledge of Allegiance?
Yes, sir, since it's flagged that.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America and to the Republic, which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so first up, folks, is public comment. And the way we do it in this town, the way we've been doing it, is if you're not on the agenda, you are allowed under public comment to say a few words. At this point, we don't really talk back. We take it under review for possible future action. And since there's quite a few folks on tonight, I would like to limit it to three or four minutes if possible. I would appreciate that. So we can get through everybody and continue on with our meeting. And we do have a planned executive session this evening. So I can't run late on that. And my understanding also, it's my first weekend as a weekday as chair, so bear with me. We have a chat room where I think you can post your name and address and say you would have a question. From there, I will pull you up for public comment with your name, if that makes sense. So who would like to be first on your public comment?
Hello? I'm Cynthia Marshall.
Hi Cindy, could you put your name and address, please, under the chat button, so we'll have it for our record? I would appreciate that.
Okay, can I do that after Doug? Because I'm not that tech savvy here.
Yeah, okay, I understand. And I'm Joe, I'm not Doug.
Oh, Joe.
Yes, how are you? So go right ahead, Cindy.
Okay, Joe. Now, my, well, I know you can't answer, but my comment, of course, has to do with the Carvana facility here in town. And one of the biggest questions that I have been getting asked is when was the project first proposed to the town of Southwick? And, you know, there's, you know, I'm sure you know, there's an awful lot of people that are wanting an in-person meeting. And I know the state is still, Governor Baker still has the, oh, I'm sorry, until tomorrow in place for in-person town meetings and things. But even if that's not listed, would there be a possibility of having an in-person meeting, at least for the last, if not with the Select Board, but with the Planning Board, their next meeting on this Carvana on June 29th? So that's my comments there. And I'll turn it over to anybody else who wants to make some comments here. Joe, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. I see I have Joanne LeBlanc next. Oh, anyone else like to make a comment? Um, I'm sorry, Kevin?
Yes. Hi, good afternoon. I apologize, I'm about as tech savvy as Cindy says she is. I will get my name in there. I live in Derry Lane. And I just wanted to reiterate what Cindy was saying. We're discussing this issue, the Carvana issue, with several people in town. And my wife and I have been deeply involved. And we would like to get the opportunity to be in person at this meeting. I think it's critical. And without talking too much about Facebook, we did have a page we set up. And I can show you the numbers of people that have reached out, looked at it, corresponded to us. So there's a lot of people in town with a lot of concerns. And I think having the ability to do an in-person meeting would be critical. I think a great service to people in the town. And that's really, I just want to, like I said, support what Cindy's saying and do everything we can to happen.
All right, thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
I only can see one page and there's three. So is there anyone else? Probably can't see your hand waving. So just give me your first name and we'll start. All right, so no one else has a public comment? Does Diana Galla?
Diane Gale.
Hello, Diane.
Hi. For those of us that aren't really up on how the process works, I think many would like to know how this proceeds and how a final vote is done. Do the townspeople get to have a vote on this? This is monumental for the town. That's my question.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Anne? Go ahead.
Hello?
Hello, Anne?
Hello. Hello, this is, it says Kim, but this is Anne Griscus.
Okay, thank you.
Sixth Second Street here in town. I'd just like to say, I would like to have an in-person public meeting on this Carvana issue. I am a resident for about 15 years here. And I don't believe that this, a business of this magnitude should just be voted in by the Board members. I think that the public should be able to speak, either in favor or against, either way. Doing it via Zoom is very difficult, especially for many of us who aren't exactly tech savvy. So I would just like that to be written in the record that I would prefer to have an in-person meeting with the board.
Hey, thank you, Anne. See, looks like Amber Bach, you're next. Amber?
Yep, I unmuted myself. Hi, so I think with the concern with everybody having over this, and I'm neutral on it at the current moment. But I think when we moved here 20 years ago, we looked at one of the master plans that was put in place, I believe about years ago. And so I was thinking that that was a little bit weighted. And it might be time for the selectmen and maybe to kind of rally up a new group and try and get a new master plan for the future, just to kind of see where this town is headed. Just an idea.
Okay, thank you, Amber.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Scott?
You're muted, Scott.
Well, Kelly's muted, I don't know what's going on.
Sorry, there we go. Is that better now?
Yes, thank you, Scott.
You're welcome, Joe. Hey, this is Scott here. It's Leonard Perez from 25 Castle Street. I just have a question. What kind of tax revenue would this bring in for the town? What kind of revenue would it bring in? And that would be it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Am I on the list?
There's no list, apparently. No one's, no one's logging in with their name like I have.
There's, I think you got everybody, Joe.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Whoever's on there, I got.
I don't, I don't know how to make a little pop-up with my name. I'm also tech unsavvy over here. So I do.
Give me your name and address for the record, please.
Sure, my name is Brandy Devino. And you can put me down for 305 College Highway in Southwick.
Thank you.
And my question is, what kind of tax breaks are, is Carvana getting from both the town and the state?
Okay, thank you.
And I also would like to see a public meeting on the 29th.
All righty. Anyone else?
Carol and Gothier here.
Hello, Carol. What's your address?
Sixth Island Pond Road.
Thank you, Carol.
I'd like to know exactly what the impact will be on the infrastructure and the water table, the wildlife, the traffic. A major concern is also if Route 57 is taken, not just College Highway. That's where our schools are and our teenage drivers. I would also like this to go to public forum.
Okay, Carol, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, John Lacy, 28 Tannery Road. How are you?
Good, John, thank you.
My concern is, I just moved in no less than nine months ago. I find out now that Carvana is a possibility to be right down the road. Now, if I had known this prior to purchasing my house, a fairly sizable investment, there is no way I would have even considered purchasing my home. Now, I understand that Southwest is going to be a connecting route so that these trucks can go past all day long, 2,500 some plus cars a day. The noise, the amount of pollutants, this is almost comical. After being in this house for only nine months to have this proposal come up is, is just absurd. I mean, in such a small town, the reason why I moved to this town was to get away from nonsense like this. So I don't know what's going on. I believe that people need to vote on this. I don't believe that this should be just a five-person individual thing. This should be a, go down to the townspeople to vote. Because this is affecting everybody on Tannery, everybody on College Highway, everybody surrounding towns. This is going to affect, I don't think people get the concept of 70 acres. There are people confusing a used car lot with 70 acres. I don't think that people absolutely comprehend the size of this or the amount of traffic it's going to produce. And as somebody who just purchased this home, I absolutely think it's just insane. So that's my concern. I think this absolutely needs to be voted on by the people. Five individuals, I think is just a little bit too big for five individuals to vote on. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, hello? Oh, sorry.
Yep, go ahead, Peter. Or no?
Hi, Peter Kelly, 40 Woodside Circle.
Yes.
I just want to reiterate that, that I really think that, again, with the magnitude of this project or that this should really be, be left up to the, to the public to vote on it, not just the board. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ron, I saw your hands.
Yes, I, I agree. I think it's a huge project. And I've been hearing all kinds of things from everybody and really don't know what's true, what's not true. And a lot of us are very busy and trying to get information out. So a public meeting would be a great benefit. And my concern is the huge impact on the town's infrastructure. And from what I'm hearing, and I don't know all if it's true or not, it's just, it sounds like an enormous thing that really the public should have a decision on. Thank you.
And your address for the record, Ron?
It's 195 Mortvining Road.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Nancy Brasca. Road.
Thank you.
I agree with everything everybody just said. We should have a public meeting and we should vote on this. This is a huge, huge undertaking for the residents in Southwick. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah. Hi, good evening, everyone. Calvin Kagan from 12 Gagin. As, I'm a huge proponent of like private property rights. I think that's very important. You should be able to do what you want or sell to whoever you want. Generally speaking, just when it comes to something of this magnitude, I think that because it's going to affect the entire town and the surrounding areas to this type of degree, as well as water rights and all this other stuff. I think that it definitely merits more deliberation and consideration from the entire community.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Stacy, did you have something to say?
Oh, no, that, that was me. I'm just using my West phone.
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
All right, have a good night.
All right.
Yeah, Sherry Benoy, 268 South Longad Road.
Thank you.
I too, I would really like a chance for all of us to have more information about this project. And one of my husband's and my concerns is we understand that they're applying for a special permit in a restricted industrial zone. One of our concerns is that if it gets approved, for one thing, that that would set a precedent for future projects. You know, we're looking around. Our daughter works for Calabrese Farms. Tommy and Donna are getting older. Who knows if their kids are going to take that farm over? They own a lot of land. There's still quite a bit of open land in Southwick. And that's why, you know, I grew up in this town. That's why a lot of people move here. That's why we stay here. We, you know, I think most of us who live here love the, the more rural place to live. We understand that it was a farm town. The land gets sold and all of that. But so one of our concerns with the vote that will come up about Carvana is, well, that then, are we going to be looking at, you know, Walmart on the Calabrese land eventually or whatever? So I'm pretty concerned about the future of the town. As someone else said, I'd like to see it stay as rural, as small-town USA as it possibly can. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Okay, do I have it? This is Jason Chigera of 10 Cedar Street. I also agree that there should be an in-person meeting and that we should be able to vote on this.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Anyone else?
Luke?
Eric or Aaron Devino?
Yeah, this is Barry Devino. 301 College Highway.
Thank you.
And I think this is a huge impact on this town and not necessarily something that I want. And I think that there should be a public meeting on this and should definitely be voted upon by the townspeople as whether this happens or not.
All right, thank you.
And this is Aaron Devino, also 301 College Highway. I know one of the things that I'm sure they use to sell this to the town with is jobs coming in. And I would also like to see information on the pay rates and quality of jobs, as well as how many jobs will be hired within their town.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? For public comment? Going once, going twice?
Joe, I'll go quick. Sarah Hedges here.
Thank you, Sarah. Address?
27 Lauren Lane, Southwick, Mass. So we've been residents here for 10 years. We absolutely love Southwick. And we very much appreciate the planning board and the selectmen. We're on here tonight just to express concerns about the traffic. We totally appreciate that property owners have rights to sell to whom they choose. But there are certainly concerns in our house about Carvana coming to Southwick. Not the reason we purchased in Southwick. We do love this town and we appreciate that some of this land has been used to build homes like ours. But there's just certainly concern about the amount of tractor trailers and traffic on that road. We love going to the businesses that are there today. We frequently shop at these places. But Carvana just doesn't seem to be adding the value that we see from other businesses on the road. So here to learn more, but I did want to comment that we have concerns as well.
Thank you, Sarah. Anyone else have a public comment? Okay, so I got one more up here. Peter Kelly, go ahead. And then we're going to continue on with our agenda.
Yeah, I'd like to see some information regarding population impact for the town. I know with other distribution centers around the country with Carvana, I would assume there may be information regarding that. But I'd like to see something around how the population fluctuated with these other distribution centers once one of the centers was put in.
Okay.
If possible, thank you.
All right, that looks like that's all I have in front of me. And like I said, we don't really respond. I do know there's some planning board members on here. So I'm sure they heard you all loud and clear. We heard you loud and clear also. So that being said, we're going to move on with the rest of our meeting. Thank you. Okay, so next up will be the payable, I'm sorry, payable payroll and minutes. Acknowledged payable warrant 2127 dated 6/8/2021 at the amount of $293,493.59. And then I need a motion for the minutes of 6/7/21.
Russ Fox will make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Doug Mowbray will second the motion.
All those in favor, Joe Diddy, I.
Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mowbray, I.
All right. That's all I have to do. So next I have up is a proclamation for maybe related to, Douglas, you can say that. A praxia awareness day?
A praxia.
Praxia. All right. So Doug, this was part of our packet a while back. And unfortunately, with the craziness of life, we didn't get to it on time.
You're too kind, Mr. Chairman. I dropped the ball. The young lady approached me. I believe she has a daughter that, that has this and asked if we would consider this. And with everything else that was going on, I dropped the ball and didn't send it to the CAO to put on the agenda. So when she reached out to me again, I asked if through, through the CAO, if he would check with the chair to carry this and kind of do a backdated proclamation, if you would, for May 14th.
Sure. Would you like to read it?
If you would like, sir.
I would like you to, yes.
So this would be a proclamation, if voted by the Board of Selectmen, that whereas May 14th marks a praxia awareness day, during which awareness will be raised through Massachusetts about childhood apraxia of speech, an extremely challenging speech disorder that affects one in a thousand children. And whereas childhood apraxia of speech causes children to have significant difficulty learning to speak and is among the most severe speech deficits in children. And whereas the act of learning to speak comes effortlessly to most children, those with apraxia require early, appropriate and intensive speech therapy, often for many years, to learn to speak. And whereas without appropriate speech therapy intervention, children with apraxia will have diminished communication skills but are also placed at high risk for secondary impacts in reading, writing, spelling, and other school-related skills. And whereas that such primary and secondary impacts diminish future independence and employment opportunities and challenge the ability to become productive, contributing residents, if not resolved, improved. And whereas public awareness about childhood apraxia of speech in Massachusetts is essential for families and children with this neurological disorder and the professionals who support them to achieve the needed services for those learning to use their own voice. And whereas our great respect goes to these children as well as their families for their effort, determination, and resilience in the face of such obstacles. Therefore, be it resolved that I, that we would proclaim May 14th, 2021, as a praxia awareness day in the town of Southwick and encourage residents to work within their communities to increase awareness and understanding of childhood apraxia of speech. So moved, Doug Mowbray.
Russ Fox will second that proclamation, Mr. Chairman.
All those in favor, Joe Diddy, I.
Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mowbray, I.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, next up is approved. Chapter 61A, right of first refusal for regularity for parcel book 5216, page 61, map 66, parcel 003-000-000-000 and map 50, parcel 002-000-001. So I believe that is also. Yep, that's a simple way of saying it. All right, so what is our theory with this?
You need a motion to, to decline our right of first refusal.
Russ Fox will make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Doug Mowbray will second the motion.
All those in favor, Joe Diddy, I.
Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mowbray, I.
All right, authorized chairperson to approve any necessary year-end stint time reserve request or municipal modernization account transfers.
Russ Fox will make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Doug Mowbray will second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
All those in favor, Joe Diddy, I.
Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mowbray, I.
Next up, we'll vote to apply for and accept federal ARPA funds.
Russ Fox will make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Doug Mowbray will second the motion.
I'm so used to going to, all those in favor, Joe Diddy, I.
Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mowbray, I.
All right. PVP, PBPC invoice number 14 and the amount of $2,363.63.
Fox will make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Doug Mowbray will second the motion.
All righty. This has to do with the rehab and septic systems. So Joe Diddy will, I'm so sorry, Joe Diddy's, what am I supposed to say? Yes or no? Yes. Don't do that motion, right? So did you approve? So yes, for Joe Diddy, all right.
Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mowbray, I.
I started reading the paperwork. Turned me off. All right. FY22, heavy equipment service bids. Is there a GPW director on?
He's here.
Hey, Joe, how are you today?
Well, you see me at my worst this morning, so.
Good, so do you want me to explain?
Please do.
So as you know, we go up to, we have contracts for annual services. We, we have one contract that's a little unique from the others. This is a heavy, heavy equipment rental contract. We, in the past, we have worked with Crestview Construction on, for this contract. We opened bids about two years ago for a new contract. And the way that bid was set up, it was a setup for potential for two option years to renew, which would make it a three-year contract. So last year, we voted to renew the contract for year two. And we are looking to, for the same recommendation to renew that contract for year three. Crestview is now looking to make any changes to their pricing that they have in place for the past two years. And as you know, we have several contracts, several projects that are under construction. We want to make sure we're continuing, making, keeping those products moving forward under this contract. And just so you know, we, we did open bids for all the other services last week. I'm going through and tabulating those results and making recommendations. We do have some new vendors this year. So I'm doing my due diligence to make sure, just checking qualifications on those vendors. And I will have those, that recommendation to you at your next meeting.
Wonderful, so I need a motion to approve.
Russ Fox will make that motion to accept Crestview on the third year. Happily make the motion to support a local business. I happily make the motion to support a local business.
Doug Mowgli will also second the motion and also comment that it's great to do business with a local firm.
All right, all those in favor? Joe DDI?
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mowgli, aye.
Randy, while I got you, how is the construction going? Are we looking okay for the summer? I mean, I know there's a ton of work out there. Are we, are we keeping up okay?
We're doing pretty good. We're, uh, Tannery Road is actively under construction right now, as you know.
Yep.
Um, Crestview is gonna wrap that up hopefully by the end of the month and, uh, we're looking to have some of that road paved. Um, uh, later on this summer, we've met with, uh, the vendor to coordinate that work already. Um, then we had a couple of hiccups on Cedar Street. Uh, we're trying to work through those issues right now. So once Tanner Road is, uh, is finished up, at least through Crestview's portion of the project, they're gonna jump back over and, uh, fix, uh, finish Cedar Street.
Wonderful. And I'll be honest, I, I don't want to jinx myself, but I haven't gotten that many phone calls about potholes that we've been able to keep up this year. For the most part.
I think so. You know, we got that new asshole recycler two years ago and I think that's really helped us, uh, take care of, uh, potholes earlier in the season. You know, we can make hot mix, uh, you know, all year long. So it, the ability to put that hot mix in the ground, you know, in February, March timeframe where in the past we had to use cold patch.
Right.
I think has really, really helped us, uh, keep ahead of the potholes.
Great. Well, thank you for your time, sir. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. So next we have a one-day liquor license for the Wick two, three promotions LLC. Now it'll be for seven, ten, twenty-one. I believe that's for the motocross nationals. Um, I see Lieutenant Landis on. Any issues that we should be aware of, sir?
Uh, nothing at this time, uh, Mr. Chairman. The, uh, there's still gonna be some COVID restrictions that the A M A is putting on to keep the pits closed for, um, to the public. So short of that, everything else I think is gonna be pretty much the same. So, um, in talking to Mr. Johnson, I'm not really seeing much changes from a logistics standpoint for us.
Okay, wonderful. Hey, in the last week, we put those two sergeants on. I have to apologize. I never reached out to you and asked your opinion or any questions. It was just me being a little rusty from not doing that in a few years, but, uh, I do apologize. I should have reached out. I know you don't care, but I felt bad after the fact.
No, no, I appreciate it and, uh, certainly, um, you know, I don't think it could have gone wrong with any one of them. We're, we're fortunate as, uh, Mr. Mowgli always says about building our bench, you guys had a good bench to go back to, I think.
Yep, I appreciate that. All right, so I need a motion for the one-day permit?
Uh, Russ Fox will make that motion for that one-day permit for the national.
Doug Mowgli will second the motion.
All those in favor? Joe Dini will stay. And I actually do some food over there during that national.
Russ Fox will, aye.
Doug Mowgli, aye.
Thank you. Next up, authorized chairperson, C O to approve town L P V E C three-year electricity supply vendor.
Fox will make that motion.
Doug Mowgli will second the motion.
All those in favor? Joe DDI?
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mowgli, aye.
Thank you. All right, did I miss anything on the agenda? I don't believe so. I think I have an updated one.
Doing great, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So then I have new business. Southwick Firefighters Association turn back of leased premises building. So as you guys know or may not know that I mean, my version is I think when we built the new fire department years ago, the, um, association used that building less, less and less. And, um, I approached them on maybe repurposing that building. And, uh, I, I had some great conversations and it appears that they, um, they feel the same way. So it looks like they would like to give it back to the town and then the town will turn around and try to repurpose that for a better cause at this time. So do, Carl, do we need a motion to accept it back?
Uh, yeah, we, we have a letter from the, uh, from the association.
Yep.
He also reviewed the nineteen sixty-five town meeting vote. And it's clear that the, uh, the per, uh, the property reverts back to the town of Southwick upon the termination of its use by the association.
Okay.
So you should, um, acknowledge the receipt of being informed by the association and take the property back. I would like to, uh, um, have that dated as of July first because we're gonna have to work with them to, uh, remove every, anything else they have in the building. And then we'll also have to put it under the town insurance rolls as a, uh, part of our insured premises, Mr. Chairman.
Understood. All right, so.
May I ask a question? I'm sorry, Mr. Fox, may I ask a question? Carl, is this building is on town land now, correct?
That is correct. It was a nineteen sixty-five lease.
So the building was a lease, right?
Right, that what happened, we leased the property, they built the building. So now you're going to take the building back and of course, you know, things will have to be done going forward in the future and that might involve different, uh, uh, purposes of reusing it. So it, it'll have to be brought up the code and all those other things. And if it turns out that we, uh, end up partnering with a nonprofit or any other organization, then you'll have to, um, go to a future town meeting and authorize any agreement, uh, going forward with any other entity.
Thank you very much.
Does that work for you, Doug?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right.
All right, Russ Fox will make a motion to, uh, accept the, uh, property back.
Doug Mowgli will second the motion.
All those in favor? Joe DDI?
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mowgli, aye.
Wonder. That's all I see under new business here. Is there any other new business? Carl, do you have any new business?
Uh, I just wanted to, no, actually it's under old business. It's the first item under old business that you have. It came a new, it's a new email.
All right, thank you. All right, so we're gonna go to old business. The Select Board requesting a joint meeting with D O T regarding the construction of the bridge in Westfield.
Right, Mr. Chairman, we did receive uh, an email late this afternoon. His office and they have uh, heard back from Mass D O T up at the North Hampton District and they are um, suggesting several dates. So I believe you as the lead person, is it, if it's gonna be you or Dog or whoever, then I can share those dates with that board member and we can continue on with that process of meeting with them.
Mr. Fox seems to get under their skin the best, so I would think Mr. Fox would be the candidate to go to the D O T.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, after my last discussions with those people, I think that'd be a great idea.
Just putting the right people in the right spots. Thank you. All right. World's famous road, road name change, Southwood Hill Road to Iron Horse Hill. I don't even know if that's correct. We gotta look at the chief.
Yes, now Kevin, Kevin and I have clarified the name and as Kevin knows, we have been, um, working with town council on all the procedural, um, information that needs to come in terms of holding the hearing. Um, you know, the different auctions that the board has and then how you'll handle your votes and you'll make the decision. But for the most part, Kevin has had contact with the and, uh, their representatives and this just seems to be something everybody is look, uh, looking forward to having a future meeting about.
Okay. And is our policy, even if the police chief is leaving, if he doesn't finish his projects, they still stay with him? And he doesn't.
That's correct.
And he doesn't, we don't have to pay him, like, it's his deal.
That's correct.
Done.
Yeah, that is correct. It's a going away gift to the new chief.
But I was afraid of it. Okay. Green energy program and town fuel. Can we just mute everyone that doesn't need to be speaking? Just stop that background music and noise. I appreciate it. Green energy program, the town fuel efficient vehicle policy first meeting.
Right, we, we, uh, um, are awaiting some information that, uh, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission needed from various municipal departments in terms of some of their fleet information. I know I just got Randy's in the other day. I think I got fire. So there's a couple of departments that just have to supply some information uh, to the regional planning agency and then they can, uh, finalize that document along with Mark Rabinsky from Mast D O E R's help and then you'll, you'll be getting that for a future first reading.
Okay, thank you. Regional dispatch research, option discussions, I M A with Westfield or Westcom select, a choice. Where are we with that?
Oh, you want that? You want me to take that?
Mr. Mowgli, I think that's all.
Uh, we both can, if, you know, you want to start out, Doug?
Well, we did have a meeting with, uh, Westfield, um, Ellen Oak Subcommittee last night. I believe we're on the agenda again for this week to kind of finalize things. I have conferred with the chief, the soon-to-be chief, the fire chief and the lieutenant fire chief. And we are all in agreement that we have an agreement in principle as documented by our attorney and their attorney. Um, there needs to be some minor details around, uh, start dates and if it doesn't happen by this date type of date stuff, but it's, you know, fill in the blank stuff, the major um, issues have been significantly negotiated and overcome. Um, and so L and O, I believe, once we have, I have a, a meeting tomorrow with our attorney. But I believe once we have those dates isolated, that will be sent from L and O back to city council for their vote and then I believe then the mayor has to sign it um, as well. And then this board would then also take a vote to ratify and sign said agreement as well. And I also believe, subject to, uh, you gentlemen, um, given the state of where we are with the negotiation with Westfield at this point and that we have an agreement in principle that we would be in a position, should you choose to take it up, Mr. Chair, to have a motion to, uh, rescind the letter of attestation for Westcom.
And that's something we should do tonight?
Something you could do it whenever you'd like, including tonight.
I think we should do it tonight and be done with it. Cause even if Westfield fell apart, I don't know if Westcom would be our direction.
I think they're.
The worst one it was, but we've all learned a lot in this process.
And the issue is right now, Mr. Chairman, is we are in the, that very tail end of a grant cycle and the state didn't quite like my explanation of please just award us the grant, we'll tell you where to send the check. So we really need to pick. We need to pick a horse and I believe, you know, I believe that, you know, the, the chiefs um, in total are in favor of a Westfield-Southwick coalition rather than us joining um, the out on the Pike gang. So that's that was the direction that I took from them and that was the direction that they charged me to go and execute. So that's where we are. So if that, that would be the direction we should probably follow and.
That would be an action item. Yep, our chief needs that as an action item so that he can, he can, uh, inform Westcom and also inform the state nine-one-one agency.
All righty. So I would entertain a motion to take Westcom off of this.
Russ Fox will make that motion.
Doug Mowgli will second the motion to revoke our letter of attestation for Westcom.
Appreciate your wording, Doug. All those in favor? Joe DDI?
Fox, aye.
Doug Mowgli, aye.
Thank you. All right, next up is the historic commission vacancy. Have we gotten anywhere with that?
Uh, no, we haven't received any, um, applications yet, but for all those people that are on the call tonight, we're always looking for people to be on boards and committees and would welcome you.
Um, I did that on my mom, yes.
I don't want to speak out of turn. I did, uh, was contacted and I did encourage someone to apply and he told me he's absolutely interested. I will get a letter from him, but Mr. Davidson is certainly very interested to take on a role on the his, on the historical commission.
Wonderful.
Mr. Chairman, I also had two people approach me that would be interested and I have asked them to submit an email or a letter.
Exactly. That's great. Awesome.
Isn't there a few spots open on that board? I believe there is, yes. Okay, great. Thank you, Russ. Thank you, Doug. Medical building vacancies. So Russ Fox Memorial Medical Building Vacancy. Russ, have you gotten anywhere with that?
Mr. Chairman, I, I did have a phone conversation with another, uh, medical or, uh, health entity other than, uh, Bay State. Uh, we had a, a, you know, a brief conversation and, uh, they told me that they would, uh, take that back and, and digest it. And, uh, I said that this board would be willing to sit down with anybody at any time uh, and work with them uh, in any way to, uh, establish some sort of medical facility in the town of Southwick.
Wonderful. Thank you. Town hall boards and committee meetings reopening guidelines update under O M L.
Well, Mr. Chairman, uh, you're aware that last Thursday, the state senate, uh, uh, came up with some legislation on how that would work and they have sent it to the, um, back to the House, the polling its members today. And they were also, um, because they're trying to reconcile both versions. And then they are intending to take a vote tomorrow so that they can get a piece of finished legislation to the governor's desk as soon as possible. So in light of that, you know, um, we'll end up just having to go back to the, uh, um, obviously the in-meeting uh, in-person meetings for the different boards and committees and, but they'll still have the ability if they wanted to use the Zoom function for other members of the public who could, um, also dial in like people are tonight or you know, in addition to being able to attend their meetings in person.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Quite a finished issue, so it's in flux, but, uh, and of course, the timeliness of how this is happening on the legislative process at the state level has been a, a source of consternation for all municipalities in the Commonwealth.
Okay, so dumb that down for me.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
The governor's order is still in effect and no in-person, in-person particip, in-person attendance is permitted through and it's up for debate even right now. It's, it's through tomorrow or after tomorrow. So we are awaiting that legislation to determine if effective tomorrow or the sixteenth, we actually would have to pivot and any meeting would have to be in person at town hall, just like it was pre-COVID.
Okay.
However, notice we have the forty-eight hour posting requirement, right? We're actually over that. Those, those meetings had to be posted Friday. So we're, we actually have to check with council and I think Carl actually has the answer that we'd have to amend those agendas because you'd be changing the location of the meeting from Zoom to in-person. And I hate for someone to dial in on, you know, a board member to dial in from Zoom and find that they can't participate in a meeting because they have to be at town hall. So hopefully the legislation will be passed and then we can have hybrid. Um, I, you know, heard loud and clear from folks earlier during this meeting regarding having meetings in person. Believe me, everybody wants to get there. And we're gonna get there. It's just a matter of the how and the when. Um, based on this legislation that should be signed as early as tomorrow, correct, Carl?
Well, that, that'd be probably the earliest. I don't know how fast.
I said as early, yeah, as early as tomorrow, maybe later this week, but um, you know, certainly for meetings coming up at the end of this month or into next month. Um, there will be the opportunity to have them in person.
That is correct. And, and, and Labor Council uh, from the Dupree Law Group, Kim has already, you know, given us a guideline on that and that was sent to the department heads and board secretaries and some of the chairpersons who have to operate their boards and be cognizant of posting requirements as well as working through the treasure, uh, town clerk treasure collector's office, sir.
And, and lastly, Carl's communicated that to the boards and commissions. Thank you very much, Carl, because I know that there's, everybody's kind of in a state of asking a lot of questions and we don't want people going off and doing stuff that would put us outside the O M L. And then also to remind boards and commissions, if we do have meetings that are not on Zoom, that they gotta dust off their old recorders and stuff because that's still a rule of put forth by this, this board that all board meetings are to be recorded and turned into the town clerk. For the last year, we've been doing that ourselves with Zoom, right? It's just kind of auto doing it for us, but we gotta get back to that if we have to come off of Zoom.
So, yeah. Go ahead. The, 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 all the different, uh, versions of the legislation will still allow some format of remote meetings Of which Zoom is one of the platforms.
And hopefully by Wednesday or Thursday this week, we'll have a better understanding of next week.
We are hopeful of that.
So it sounds like tomorrow's. Plan, does planning board have a meeting tomorrow?
No.
No.
Well, even better.
So believe me, once, once. Once we get the signed legislation and all the councils have it and labor and town council and. All the municipal board chairpersons and their. Support staff and secretaries will have it in a timely manner. Once it comes out.
Good. So it's going in the right direction. We're just a week, we're a week behind. Alright, select board goals and objectives.
Yep, you're gonna have a draft. That should have been given, so at some point you should be reviewing it in. And submitting the items that you want to see that. Be amended or edited and please pass them into the office.
Alrighty. Revisiting peddling and soliciting by law.
Right. Based upon last week's meeting, we have. Made note of your wishes for it to be from ten in the morning till six at night. And we have also communicated. The wishes of you wanting the current bylaw to be amended. And at the same time, we've also. Asked town council to see whether or not the previous legislation approved at the annual. May requiring civil fingerprinting will also be incorporated into that. As you know, to cross reference the other bylaw that Bobby put forward a few months ago.
Okay, and I didn't hear much this week and or last week in regards to that.
Nope, but that's so that issue is being followed up after your last meeting in your request.
So I guess I got my point of course. Alright, one or two more going, more binding road dog hearing disposition. How do we end up with that?
Well, you you asked for input from council.
Yep.
And they did. You know, they did start looking into it and obviously. He got back to inputs to the chief and I. And obviously, the issue that you'd be doing now is. Another hearing on whether they've violated the. Which seems to be the case. And so remember, the other order was a determination of finding the dog a nuisance, which was done. So you made that order. Now, the allegation is that there's a violation of what you had imposed to follow through on that. And the best practice is to have a hearing to determine whether the order has been violated. And if there's a finding of violation, then you would have an option. To sanction for that violation, which is a seizure and impoundment of a dog. Or you could continue that hearing in attempt to reach a settlement with the parties. So that is your. Response from town council based upon your request of us last week.
Wonder. Thoughts?
My, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I think I think we said that we need to follow through on this. I think we need to schedule that hearing. So that people know that this is a serious matter. We take it seriously. And and let's see if we can't, maybe this will be enough to make people understand that.
Okay. Carl, let's schedule a hearing. Douglas, what's your thoughts?
I concur. I mean. You have to. We made a decision. And. You know, after a duly held public hearing and. We have to follow up if if especially if there's just a want and disregard for it, right? I understand if they're moving or whatever, but they could have been more communicative with the A C O and this this office as to what's going on.
Absolutely.
And dog training, the dog training as specified in the in the decision was isn't relevant whether you're moving or staying.
Yeah. Yeah, I believe there was some pretty, you know, I get the fence could have been expensive. I get if you're moving, you're moving, but. If you met us halfway, that's one thing, right? But we didn't get that. So, yeah, let's continue on and schedule a hearing. Sounds like it'll be in person. So they can bring the dog.
I was gonna say they don't have to bring the dog.
No dogs. Alright, so up next, August sixth, Southwick Night. Starfires game at Bullens Field. Friendly reminder. Purchase tickets online, Doug?
Working on that. I'll put it out there. I believe you can get them online from the Starfires and. Since we have the most people we've had in attendance at a select board meeting, I'll take this opportunity to. You know, throw out a pitch. It's Southwick Night at the. The Starfires Star Fires at Bullens Field in Westfield and they got a special for. Southwick residents for tickets and a hot dog and a soda or something and. There'll be some Southwick folks throwing out the first pitch and so on and so forth.
August sixth third.
August sixth.
Make sure we let everybody know, August sixth.
Correct, and it'll be, you know, just a great night for folks from the town of Southwick to to get out there and represent at the ballgame.
Yeah, that'll be a lot of fun seeing somebody throw a ball. I can tell you that. As far as a elected official, maybe. It won't be me. That's for damn sure. Great, let's get that going.
If if we're wearing helmets, it's not because we're afraid of balls from the field, right?
That's correct. Alright, appointments for town boards, committees and emergency management agency. Are we gonna continue on with that tonight or are we gonna put that off?
I think, Mr. Chairman, that we have all the information from emergency management, so I think we could knock that off tonight.
Alright, so I need a motion to. Reappoint emergency management.
I will make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I don't have anything in front of me.
You want me to read the roster, Mr. Jim?
Yes, please.
Okay, Eric Car, Eric Carroll for emergency management. Radio amateur civil. Known as RACEs. And Community Emergency Response Team, which is CERT. So, and he's a communications officer, so that's what's submitted by Charlie. So he'll on that one.
I need a motion.
Russ Fox will make that motion.
Doug Mogul will second the motion.
All those in favor? Joe D D I?
Fox, hi.
Doug Mogul, I.
Okay, the next one is Pauline Dunlap, Emergency Management, RACEs and CERT.
Can we do this as an omnibus motion?
Yeah, just if you want, I can read the rest of them and then you can take the vote.
That's my fault. Go ahead.
Is that okay? You want me to do that?
Please.
Okay, next one is Charles Darling, Assistant Director. And that'd be Emergency Management, RACEs and CERT. Next one would be Keith Strongren, another Assistant Director, Emergency Management. RACEs and CERT. And the final one would be Charles Donlap. As Director, Emergency. Radio Amateur Civil Emergency Service, RACEs and then Community Emergency Response Team, CERT. And that is the group of them, sir.
Russ Fox will make the motion to approve that group.
Doug Mogul will second the motion.
All those in favor? Joe D D I?
Russ Fox, hi.
Doug Mogul, I.
Alright. Anything else under old business?
Mr. Chairman, I I'm the clerk, so I go last. If there, everyone else can go first.
Carl, anything for new business, old business?
Uh, no, we're good right now.
Mr. Fox?
No, sir.
Mr. Mogul?
I I want to bring an update to the board on the Carvana project.
Sure.
And. I want to try to present some of the facts as I understand them and and where we are and how we kind of got here. So I was designated back, I believe it was at the end of last year. By this board during a a public meeting, meeting of the Board of Selectmen to to meet with. A land architect and. The state regarding a potential applicant for. The Griffin Land property as far as a proposed use. We had discussions with that. Applicant who turned out to be Carvana after. A couple of weeks, actually a couple of months of discussion without telling us who it was. As is customary in these types of development projects when you've got a third party site development firm involved, working on behalf of a client. So all that being said, that's kind of how we got to the point where we. They came in front of the planning board informally with a. An early draft of their proposal. This board has always felt that, you know, we kind of. We have a need for smart balanced growth in the town of Southwick. You need to have some level of business growth to go along with residential growth. To promote, you know, a stable job base, a stable economic base. This parcel, the Griffin Land piece, former Colbro piece. You know, in my fifteen years on the planning board prior to coming on to the Board of Selectmen, you know, this was a parcel that had been identified as. You know, a significant. Future development site, right? We knew that Griffin Land was not into in. In the agricultural business for the long term at this point and that they were looking to either develop themselves or sell this property. And we had talked over the years over, you know, many potential, what this might look like. You know, a hundred acres or ninety five acres is a very significant size, single or parcel along, you know, a very busy. Roadway as far as, you know, traffic count to be attractive to to a potential applicant. This site, you know, zone industrial restricted, it's always been zoned. Industrial restricted. The site is outside of all wetland areas and buffers as as laid out by Carvana, so it's not subject to conservation jurisdiction. It's outside the wellhead protection area, so it's not subject to any of the provisions of the wellhead district, which. Kind of hampers us when we have prod, you know, potential industrial projects that come in in our industrial park. Because most of our industrial park is over the wellhead. Which has a lot of limitations on the types of businesses that can go in there. This project requires zero variances. It complies in completely with our town zoning code, chapter one eighty five. So at this point, the only thing they need is a special permit from the planning board for their use. Because it's not, I believe, the only allowed use in the I R is bookbinding and printing. That being said, and I'll talk a little more about this, but the planning board has wide jurisdiction to place conditions upon a per a special permit. To mitigate potential downsides from a use. A proposed use. A little bit about Carvana. They are a Fortune five hundred company listed on the New York Stock Exchange. It's an online car shopping business. It's a. You know, people go online, you can buy a car online and have it delivered to your home. You know, when I first read about it, I was kind of. I had to think about it. It's something I don't know that I personally was comfortable to do originally. But, you know, we order everything, a lot of things now online and they just show up at our house and, you know, things that I would have never thought I would have bought online five years ago. It's it's a no brainer these days. This is a growing market. They've become a significant player. In the used car market. I've even spoken to some used car dealers in the area and they sell cars to Carvana. But, you know, as far as this market, it's a growth market. These, this Carvana is one of, if not the biggest player in the market. And they're interested to to make Southwick their northeast regional headquarters for this site. And they're very concerned about scale as far as getting to. To be a large player, very similar to what you've seen in some of these other. Other online businesses where the the big two survive and the others others below it don't. These guys are in that tier now and they're looking to maintain that. So that kind of leads to the financial piece of this and I I heard it during the public comments. I've heard comments out and about in town. So let me, I I want to relate a phone call. That we had. As part of the discussion. So first of all, and 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 Carl can attest to this because he was on a couple of the calls and has been answering the state folks. The state folks don't know what to do with themselves. They the state economic development folks. You know, they're used to dealing with these types of things and, you know, basically, what do you want or how much do you want? There is no state aid on the line for this project. They have not asked for or nor are they receiving any state aid. They are not receiving, nor have they asked for a local TIF or Tax Incentive Financing Plan from this from the town of Southwick. If there had been one, that would have had to have go in front of a town meeting. So that's kind of, I'll circle back to that piece. They're also going to contribute. Hundreds of thousands of dollars that the exact amount yet to be determined by the planning board. Towards a mitigation fund for intersection improvements at the intersection of College Highway and Tannery Road. I don't know the exact value of this project completely, so and I've heard numbers anywhere from forty to a hundred million dollars, so. I just plugged fifty million dollars in as a ballpark number and used eighteen dollars a thousand as. A reasonable tax rate because it's pretty close to where we are right now. That works out to be a nine hundred thousand dollars a year and taxes phased in on day one. You know, a typical TIF. In the town for the last decade or so that the town is has done them and approved at town meeting by a. A majority of the voters at a town meeting is usually on a sliding scale over the first ten years with a ten percent. Step in per year, so you get no taxes the first year, ten percent the second year, yada, yada, a hundred percent the eleventh year. Also included in that or not included in that nine hundred thousand dollars, this site would also be subject to without exemption. Three percent of their taxes to the CPA, which works out on the nine hundred thousand twenty seven grand. I'd also like to bring up the fact that this parcel, three years ago, we were, we did the same exact dance. I was. Invited or designated by the Board of Selectmen to be the designee for a potential economic development project on. The same piece of property on the Griffin Land piece. And we also had designated the the Economic Development Committee to be a part of that. That was a hardware distributor that was proposing to construct seven hundred and fifty thousand square feet of building with. Special permit permission to one million square feet. They were also requesting millions of dollars in state aid. They are also requested, the first pass. Incentive to the town was a fifteen plus year. Tax deal on their local tax. And by the way, they wanted a free building permit, which we found out we can't do under state law. So there's been activity on this site over the years. There's, you know, that other one, I think, was would have been a much larger. Construction footprint. I mean, a million square feet. You can see that down in Windsor where they're building Amazon warehouses. And it would have brought forty jobs to the town. Right? It would, that's that's their job number. It was just basically a huge warehouse, a lot of truck traffic in and out. But basically, very few jobs. It was very, you know, just a big storage warehouse for distribution within the northeast to hardware stores. So we've seen this. We've been down this road. This is not. This is something we've we've worked with in the past. So I guess. You know, how do we take a look at a project like this and how do you consider how to mitigate some of the negative impacts? And also answer questions, right? And one of the reasons I asked for time tonight, Mr. Chairman, was to kind of dispel some of the some of the rumor and conjecture that's been running around. Especially around the finance piece, right? But how do you neg, you know, mitigate some of the negative impacts? There are going to be some negative impacts of a project of this size. It is inevitable, right? But during the planning board hearing, there is time for public comment. The planning board are also a reasonable reasonable bunch that have been doing this a while and can impose certain conditions on. A special permit. Should they choose to grant one, for example, and these are just examples, the planning board will make up their own mind. No traffic east of Sam West on Tannery Road. Lighting, they do have a lighting plan in their plan. I don't think they actually have gotten to it yet. But, you know, there was, there was some concern about light pollution and spillover of lighting that can be addressed. Screening at the rail trail, right? The the parcel does go all the way back now with the addition of of the other piece that they bought to the rail trail. How could you screen some of that from from so it's not as viewable or not viewable from the rail trail? We talked about signalization at Tannery and College Highway and the addition of turn lanes and and so on to improve that. Intersection, that intersection today has already tripped the threshold and wish you need a signal at that intersection. Carvana adds pressure to that intersection. Significant pressure, not going to minimize to minimize that. But that intersection has already exceeded the threshold to need need a light, right? So having somebody come in and contribute to a mitigation fund. So having somebody come in and contribute to a mitigation fund and then have the town undertake the project with the state to, to signalize that intersection is going to benefit all residents in town and anyone using that intersection. And also, um, you know, there's starting Randy Securita Grant and as part of the reuse part of the conclusion of work in the sand pit at the end of what is laid out as Hudson Drive today, but where Hudson Drive's ends to con- connect Hudson Drive through to Sam West would be a significant bypass for truck traffic through a signalized intersection at Hudson and 57, through to Sam West, right? And, and in, onto Tannery and into Carvana as one use or, or the businesses on Sam West today. Traffic going outbound, same thing. You take pressure off the intersection at the center by, by the plaza and, um, at Tannery and, and College Highway. If that traffic can come back through the industrial park, which it's an industrial park. On the water issue, yes, Carvana will be a significant water user. They'll certainly be in the top 10 of our water users in town. We do have the capacity to serve this project as, as well as other development. Chairman Doherty spoke eloquently during the planning board hearing last week. People are conflating the water ban, which is activated at the state level due to the level of water in, in the Westfield River versus not having water to provide for a project such as this or residential use. If this project were to be approved, that we would be using water that we can't provide elsewhere. That's not necessarily the case. It's not the case. And the other thing is, you know, water projects, you know, we have one water project ongoing now to, that was an add to the pump project that was just com- completed. It was left off due to budget. It was passed in this year's budget to fund for this year to bring additional water into the pump station from Westfield down into the station at Jerry Drive. So there is water in the system to support this project. Another piece that's been a little bit overlooked is they will be a significant sewer user based on the amount of water coming in. There'll be a lot of water going out. We've been carrying around the sewers on the tax rate, uh, unlike the water, which is financed completely by water users. We've been carrying a big chunk of the sewer debt service on the tax rate for years since its inception. You know, we funded the parallel interceptor. We fought, we, we funded the capacity at the sewer plant. And frankly, every time we've brought a project to town meeting for additional sewer construction that would use some of the capacity that we've bought and paid for, it's gotten turned down. This will have a connection to the sewer. It will also stub the sewer back to College Highway, so future development in the frontage parcels that are not part of this project will be able to connect to the sanitary sewer uh, in town and to Westfield. It's a huge benefit, in my opinion. Um, and frankly, get, get the sewer, um, expense onto the sewer retained earnings where it rightly belongs, right? As for the, the water use, significant amount of the water use is for washing cars as they come through their, their processing line. You know, you go buy a new car, it's washed and clean and ready for you to go. And as it been explained to me, the car wash is no different than the car washes that you find at, in Westfield um, or at the two in Southwick, or three in Southwick, right? They don't strictly just dump water on your car and then send it to the sewer. They reclaim the water in a, in a sedimentation tank. Sediment and impurities fall to the bottom, that, and then just like, and also like your septic system. They use fresh water for the final rinse. That water goes to the tank and forces water out, you know, dirty water down into the sewer, which goes to the treatment plant in Westfield, certainly does not get put right into the ground here in Southwick. And as far as their parking lots and storage areas, no different than any other parking lot and storage area being constructed in modern times. These will have, their parking areas will have oil-water separators to collect runoff as they come off the parking lot and collect oil and other impurities before they're pushed in, you know, the water itself, clean water is pushed into the, into the infiltration basins and it back into the ground. Um, and then I also heard some talk about fuel. Yes, they are going to have an above-ground fuel station, not unlike the one right across the street at our own DPW garage. Not unlike, um, you know, it's not going to be in, in the ground. We just dug out the one at the town of Southwick. I believe the school still has one in ground, but, uh, they're in the process of looking at that and, and potentially looking at that, but I just wanted to be clear. That's also for fueling up cars as they leave, um, to be sold. And, and, you know, it has to be reviewed and approved by the state and our fire marshal, right? So the plant, the, the dynamic on this is there hasn't been a lot of hubbub and back and forth in the town on this. They only need a special permit. They're not asking for, uh, a TIF, which would have brought it in front of town meeting. They're not asking for a variance of, of zero frontage on, on a public way, and, and so they had to go in front of Board of Appeals to get relief from zoning. This product's wholly with, you know, project's wholly within zoning and, and so the planning board is the venue to hear this. And you've got an elected planning board that's going to, you know, do their due diligence. I've watched the chairman, the vice chair and the other members in action over the last several months, um, several years, actually. But even through a pandemic, conducting contentious public hearings on Zoom, which everyone agrees is not optimal, but that was the rules of the road up till now. They've done a yeoman work. They've taken all the input and acted accordingly within the best interest of the residents and the town. And I think, you know, I, I, I have faith in the planning board in, in, in doing the right thing here as far as the applicant and what they, what they're proposing, that the use is compatible with the, with, with the land, the, the parcel that they're applying for and within, you know, their right to apply and they, you know, so your planning board has an application in front of them. They're going to do a great job to hear it, take the input. If they decide to approve it, they'll put the right conditions on it to, to mitigate some of the impact. And, and we go from there. Um, so as the, as the select board designee for this project, right? The only thing I can ask for from this board at this time, because we ha- Thank you. Um, I know I spoke too long, but you didn't put me on mute. I'm almost done. The only thing I can ask to do is, at this point from the Board of Selectmen, is to have a motion in support of this project to show the planning board and the other residents in town that we believe as a board that this, this is a suitable economic development activity for the town. And, you know, the project should move forward with the right conditions put on it. And the rest of the stuff that I talked about as far as making the project palatable. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
You're breaking up and that. Are you there, Doug?
I am. Can you hear me now?
The last part of that was all broken up for me anyways.
Can you hear me okay now?
What's that?
Can you hear me now?
You're breaking up, sir.
Okay.
I can hear you, Doug. Well, Ross, can you hear?
Yeah, I, I can hear you, Doug.
Oh, okay. So I, I guess that's how I, to-
They're not moving, no.
I think it's Joe, not me then. All right, so that's the only thing I, you know, if we want to hold that off and come back to it at the end when Joe's in, connection improves or whatever, that's great. But that was my, you know, my position is that we should move, we should have a motion in front of this board in support of this project. And support the, you know, and, you know, whatever support we can provide to the planning board in their endeavor, but they're the board that has to hear it and vote on it. And, and I, you know, I also, lastly, just regarding the open meeting law, I know this has been challenging Carl for yourself and myself with the rules of the road constantly changing in the last couple of weeks. And, you know, if we can get this, right now, we're prohibited from meeting in person. If we can get to the point where we can meet in person, I hear people that want to have, have their two minutes at the microphone. We'd love to provide that. Not on Zoom. So hopefully we'll get there and by June, I believe June 29th is a continuation of the public hearing. We, hopefully we'll be in a, a place to be able to offer that. Did we lose the chairman?
He, he just reappeared down below.
Yeah, okay.
I'm back. There you go. Sorry about that. That was weird. All right. So you're looking for a motion?
That's my proposal, sir.
Let me, let me just add, you know, uh, as you know, I grew up in Southwick, so I've seen the, a lot of changes over the years. And I, I know this property was zoned industrial years ago. It was done so for a reason, because a healthy community needs to have residential, commercial and industrial if it's going to grow and maintain a stable tax rate. I mean, we're a growing community. We have people that are on fixed income. And if the tax rate continues to go up, some of these people can no longer afford to live in the town of Southwick. So I think this is a project that we have to take a serious look at, a very serious look at. I, I think that there's a lot of people confused, a lot of misinformation out there. And that's why I think it's very important that the planning board go over in detail, and I, I would imagine Carvana is going to go in detail of what this project involves. But from what I've been told and what Mr. Mowgun has, has said, and also my tenures on the Economic Development Commission for the town of Southwick, I, I would certainly make the motion, uh, that the town support it at this point.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion.
Okay. Motion was made in second. All those in favor? Joe DDI?
Fox, aye.
Doug Mowgun, aye.
And I, you know, I also want to bring up, so I live next to, I believe, 200 to 300 acres. I just got posted by another tobacco company or maybe the same tobacco company or now, now a land development company. And I know the zoning isn't the same today, but, you know, there's all these parcels in town. So I think our industrial park isn't that big. That's just probably the biggest piece of that industrial park, Mr. Mowgun, I believe. So, you know, there isn't, it, I don't, I don't see Walmart moving next door. What people don't realize, you know, and I, and I know when we hang up, we'll get slammed, I get it, um, because we don't have a Trader Joe's or, or the other, you know, uh, decent restaurants or businesses in town, but they don't want to come here. We, we have reached out and tried to have that discussion, and I think Agawam is the Wild West and Southwick, we're not even on the map. So I, I just don't see that future development coming, as they say, the Riverdale Road theme. I, I don't see it. Is this project huge? Yeah, it's big. Is it a little scary? Sure it is. But it's, it's, you know, and I guess if we don't do it, we don't do it. We didn't do the trucking terminal two years ago. And then three years from now, there'll be something else that the parcel's not going away. And I hate to put Mr. Wally on the spot, but John Wally's not buying it. And John's done a great job of buying up farmland and keeping it, um, as farming, but, you know, we're very fortunate to have him doing that. But there comes a time when you're just not doing that anymore. So that's, that's my two cents for what it's worth. Anything else under old business? Nothing. All right, we're going to go an executive session to not reconvene. Oh, let's see here, sorry. Okay, uh, we're going to executive session person, MGL chapter 30A, S21, two and three, chapter 214, section 1B and CMR 20 dash oh three B. Regarding Labor Council and Police Chief, regarding police union negotiations, litigation, non-union personnel, collective bargaining and strategy, executive session, MGL chapter 30A, S21, two and three, section 1B and CMR 29.031B. Police union, and then on the gate exemption number two, move the executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and to not reconvene an open session. Move the executive session to conduct collective bargaining sessions with non-union personnel and to not reconvene an open session. Move to go on executive session to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel and to not reconvene an open session. That's number two. And exception three, move the executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, that the chair declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the body and to not, to reconvene an open session. Move to go on executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation and that the chair declare that an open meeting may have a effect on the lit- litigation body of the body and to not reconvene an open session. And then last, chapter 214, section 1B, a person shall have a right against unreasonable substantial and serious interference with their privacy. The superior court shall have jurisdiction and equity to enforce such right and the connection therewith to award damages. That's it, folks. Thank you, and we're off to executive session.
Roll call vote, Joe?
I'm so sorry, roll call vote. Joe DDI?
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mowgun, aye.
All right, thank you.